From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting will convene momentarily.
Good morning, and welcome to the Tuesday, January 30 morning session of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We're glad that you've joined us today. Would the board please reconvene? And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scribner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
We're going to begin the morning with a salute to the flag, followed by a moment of prayer, silence, and meditation. We are honored this morning to have Steve Schelling lead us in the flag salute, so after Steve is done, please remain standing for a moment. Good morning, Steve.
Thank you. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, Steve, for doing that for us. We're going to begin our morning with our consent agenda, and I want to read you a little bit about the consent agenda. There are agendas, by the way, at the back of the room if you would like a copy to follow along with us. All items listed on the agenda with a CA or above them, those items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience would like to comment or ask questions regarding an item that's on consent, you may do so. I'll call for you, give you an opportunity to do that in a moment. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda if he or she feels it is warranted, and it will be considered in its listed sequence with an opportunity for any member or the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken if that item is pulled. So let's go through the agenda, and I'll highlight for you which are the consent items. Beginning on page two, items three, four, and five, and at the bottom of the page, number eight, on page three, item number nine, and then items 11 through 14. On page four, items 15 through 18, and at the bottom of the page, item 20. And on page five, all the items 21 through 24 are on consent. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment about any item that's on the consent agenda? I don't see anyone, so we'll return to the board. Colleagues, do any of you have any comments, or do you wish to pull anything? Then is there a motion for us to proceed with the approval of our consent agenda?
No movement.
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. We have two resolutions and certificates to hand out this morning. The first is a proclamation proclaiming February 2018 as safety, I'm sorry, Safely Surrendered Baby Awareness Month in Kern County, and I believe Supervisor Gleason is going to make that presentation. Can you make a motion to approve?
Motion and non-proclamation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Please cast your votes.
Thank you. The motion is approved, four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Perez.
Nathan says he's ready, so we're ready to go. What a great opportunity to introduce some great people with a great cause. I'm standing here in the shadows of Ally and Anthony for what you've done and your commitment to not only Kern County, but to humanity. I mean, this is bigger than just Kern County, it's bigger than just us. It's a wonderful opportunity where a young baby can be brought over to a fire department, and we can make arrangements anonymously and without any information that needlessly need to be given out to anybody. We can match a beautiful human being with a beautiful family. This is all goodness, and I'm proud to say that we have a team of experts behind me who are dedicated to ensuring that this program is preciously managed, and they do a great job. So I got Cindy here, who is the deputy director, and she's going to help us with this proclamation, but let me read it, and then I'll pass it off to you, Cindy, okay? Proclamation reads that the Board of Supervisors, Nathan, you listening here? Okay, all right. Board of Supervisors, Kern County officially proclaim February 2018 as Safely Surrendered Baby Awareness Month in Kern County, and we are thrilled, it's signed by Honorable Mike Maggert, and we're thrilled to make this presentation of you and to thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you.
Cindy.
Okay. Great. Thank you Supervisor Gleason, and good morning Chairman Maggert and other members of the board. As he said, my name is Cindy Utes with the Department of Human Services, and I'm pleased to share with the board and the community today the life-saving work of the Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition. As you can see by this large group standing behind me, the Department of Human Services is not alone as we lead this ongoing effort of educating Kern County about the safely surrendered baby law. The safely surrendered baby law allows for women in crisis the option of walking into a fire station or hospital emergency room to surrender their baby into the safe arms of a fireman, nurse, or other hospital personnel. They can do so without providing their name or any other personal information, and with no fear of being prosecuted or child abandonment. This is the simple mission of the Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition, to get this message out and to prevent the tragic abandonment of a newborn. Since 2006, when our department began tracking the statistics, 63 newborns have been safely surrendered in Kern County, with six babies last year alone in our community. Safely surrendered baby law also allows for the mother to reclaim their baby, but only after 14 days, up to 14 days after she has safely surrendered the infant. The Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition in Kern has grown to include most of our hospitals, Kern Medical, Dignity Health, Adventist Health, Delano Regional, Ridgecrest Regional, Kern Valley Healthcare, Tehachpew Valley, and First Five Kern. We are grateful today that Fire Chief Brian Marshall from the Kern County Fire Department, also we have Bakersfield City Fire Department join us, along with Public Health Clinica Sierra Vista, which you'll hear from later today, I believe, and also the Bakersfield Pregnancy Center as part of our coalition. We are also especially grateful for Roland Meyer, who's also behind me in support here today, and the First Five Kern. Through their funding, we are able to run a public service announcement in the movie theaters, and also in your board packet, you'll see a list of events that we'll be putting on throughout the community for our Safely Surrendered Baby Month. Thank you again for this proclamation and allowing us this time this morning. Join us in celebrating the men and women who make this law possible as we hold our press conference at the Delano Regional Medical Center on Wednesday, February 7, at 11:00 a.m. One of the four infants of the sixth this year was from the Delano Regional Medical Center, so it's a real important, important site. So now, without, I know we're waiting for the main attraction today, but I would like to invite Ally and Anthony Davis up with their son Nathan to share their story of how they participated in the safely surrendered baby law. Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you for inviting us here. We're very passionate about supporting the safe surrender law, and we've been very vocal in trying to support it because we feel that it gives birth mothers an option outside of abandonment, and we're blessed to be recipients. And so I just want to thank everyone for the efforts that are put forth in February to publicize this law and to get the information out there, because if even one child is safely surrendered, it's worth all the effort. And so, Ally, you want to tell us a little bit about our story?
So we were foster parents for 10 years. We've had over 50 babies in our household. Through that process, we have adopted three, one of which was a safe surrender, in my arms over here. We just wanted to thank the birth mother for the courageous way she had given her child over, safely surrendered him in the hospital. Our first child was a micro premie, which means he was born under 26 weeks gestation, and he was under two pounds. He was one pound, four ounces. We got a call from a social worker about this little guy, and he said, "I have a micro premie again, who is a safe surrender, and he needs a loving family." So we went down and started visiting with our soon-to-be son, who was also one pound, four ounces, 11 inches long. We spent four months in the NICU with him, and finally was able to take him home after four months of helping him to grow and get bigger.
Okay. Overall, our experience with the adoption process has been awesome, but we're especially thankful for this safe surrender program because it allowed us to obviously get Nathan, and we're just very thankful for it, and we...
We wanted to talk about also the safe surrender month, if, all the efforts that everybody behind us has put forth for this month of awareness, if even one mom chooses safe surrender over abandonment, then we feel like we've done our job.
Yeah.
We've given back. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We can see why you would fall in love with little Nathan.
Nathan, you stand right in the middle of everybody. You're the star of the show.
Beautiful example. You must have immense hearts to take care of that many children through your young lives. Congratulations, and thank you for what you do. Our second presentation this morning is a certificate of recognition honoring Steve Schelling upon his retirement from Clinica Sierra Vista. This does not require a motion, so I will come down and make that presentation. Come on up. Have you noticed the size of the grin on his face? In 1971, Clinica de los Campesino opened in a park out of a trailer in Lamont to serve migrant farmworkers. It was a much different organization and place than it is today. Out of the movement that happened about 50 years ago to develop community health centers across the country, what became Clinica Sierra Vista was born. When Steve arrived in 1973 to lead the organization, the name was changed to the name we now recognize as Clinica Sierra Vista. Clinica now has about 75 locations that serve throughout the valley. It's the fourth-largest federally qualified healthcare center in the United States and the second-largest in California. If, I was just talking to somebody who is a real player in the healthcare community here, and I'm going to quote something that he said. He said, "If they were ever to," I'm not suggesting that we do this because you'd be mortified, and we probably will never do it, "but if we ever had to erect one statue to the person who has the most revolutionized and affected healthcare for people in the Central Valley, it would be a statue of Steve Schelling, because there's no doubt of the hundreds of thousands of lives that he has helped improve and improve the quality of." I've had my own private conversation with him about how I will miss him personally, his insight, his willingness to take any challenge. He has a way of cutting through all of the chaff that's out there to get down to the heart of what the issue is. He has been an invaluable resource to me, but what's more important, he has been an invaluable resource to our entire community and the greater region that we all live in. So I want to join my colleagues today in applauding Steve for the work he's done to make our community healthier, safer, and better. He'll be missed as a county partner, but we wish him well in his retirement, and I'm just thrilled for you, but I don't quite know what we're going to do without you. Okay? So here's what this says. This is a certificate of recognition presented to Steve Schelling of Clinica Sierra Vista in recognition of your retirement from Clinica Sierra Vista and providing quality healthcare to Kern County residents for over four decades, and for exemplary public service and civic contributions to the community and Kern County on this, the 30th day of January 2018, signed by all the members of the board. Thank you, Steve, for all you've done. Blessings on your retirement. I hope you have a great time and live a long and healthy life enjoying it.
Thank you.
Share a little bit with us.
Well, wow, I'm overwhelmed. The last presentation got my emotions pumping a bit, the baby surrender program. I started with that one, so I'm already welling over here a bit. I would like, first of all, to recognize some of my staff who have joined me here today. Would you please stand? These are the people, our staff and board members, I see. These are some of the 1,280 staff that serve in our three counties, Fresno, Enio, and Kern. They do just tremendous work, and they make me look good, and they are the folks that are carrying the water every day on behalf of the underserved populations that we've been blessed and privileged to serve now for 46 years. And so I really want to recognize their efforts and their time and the effort they put forward every day, sometimes in the shadows, very much like other programs, to really serve the people of this community. Just personally, I want to tell you that when I came here a long time ago now, I expected I would stay just a matter of a few months or a year, and Kern County and this community captured me. The work grabbed me. The people of this community are so wonderfully friendly and supportive, and were so welcoming. I mean, there were challenges, there were bumps in the highway, for sure, but over these decades, we have really developed a deep and fond affection for each of ourselves and our patients and the people we serve, and that's what's kept me going these many years. I have loved this work. It's a little surreal when I say the word retirement. I have a little kind of difficulty getting it out of my lips, but I'm beginning to get more resigned and accepting of that idea, and there is some real attraction to the idea as well. So I am looking forward to that. I do want to introduce a special person who has joined me here this morning, our brand-new CEO, who started yesterday, Brian Harris. Brian, come up here, please. Last year, we, most of 2017, we conducted a, one of your board members, I won't say who, said, when I pointed him out in the audience, they said, "Oh, he's a lot younger than you." And I said, "That was the plan." Our board conducted a national search last year, went on for most of the entire year, and throughout that process, we looked at lots of people around the United States and here locally, and settled on Brian. Brian, a little background with him, is he has run health centers, first in Oregon in Klamath Falls for a period of four or five years, and then some years ago moved back to North Carolina, where he ran a health center on the East Coast for the last 13 years. He and his family have accepted to come out here and join us and take over this very important position, and so he is now your newest member of the greater Kern County community, living here with his family. His kids are now in school, and so we're very excited to have Brian join us, and I wanted at least to introduce him to you so that you'll now begin to see who is going to be representing Clinica Sierra Vista going forward. I want to thank you, members of the board, and especially my dear friend Mike and all of you. You have been really great to me. You've been very supportive. When I've needed your assistance, or your counsel, or your help on a particular matter, you have religiously come forward on behalf of our organization. I can't say enough about how my relationships with all of you have grown and prospered and have been so positive over these many years. It's very touching, and I want to thank you very much. So thank you for this proclamation. Mr. Harris, do you want to say hello to the board? Just say hello?
It's my pleasure to be a part of the community, and I look forward to working with you, but this is for Steve, so thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Want to take a photograph?
Sure.
Funny how this page turns, and you don't know exactly what's next, but it's exciting times we live in. We next offer an opportunity for the public to come before us at each time we meet to share with us any concerns that they might have that are not otherwise on our agenda for the day. So are there any members of the public here today that would like to make comment to us about anything that is not otherwise on our agenda? I see somebody in the back there. Come on forward. Good morning. We offer two minutes to any member of the public. Could you please give us your name and proceed with your comments? Thank you.
Nadine Escalante.
Good morning.
Good morning. On September 12, 2017, I was at a board meeting, and you, Mr. Maggert, had asked Mr. Nations if he had been in touch with my attorney yet regarding the issues that I have brought to your guys' attention, the issues with the Sheriff's Department, the issues with probation, the issues with Child Protective Services, basically every county department. Mr. Nations has failed to talk to my attorney. We want a resolution to this. I am sick and tired of living in fear. I'm sick and tired of having sheriffs and now BPD harass me and my neighbors. I am sick and tired of helicopters flying over my house. I am sick and tired of the harassment of this county, and I am asking you, Mr. Maggert, you've been in office for almost 10 years. Please put an end to this. Please. I believe in this county. I've been born and raised in this county. I've been dealing with this kind of nonsense since I was three years old. I do not want to have to deal with this for the rest of my life. My children shouldn't have to deal with this. I'm asking for a resolution. I'm asking for the county to please step up and do the kind things that I see that you do in the community.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Escalante. I'll discuss this with Mr. Nations and make sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Nations, do you want to say anything this morning about this? Or, okay, so can we give her assurance that you will be in contact with her attorney? Okay, Ms. Escalante, he will be in contact with your attorney, ma'am. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Are there any other members of the public here this morning that would like to make comment to us? I don't see anyone, so I'll return to the board. Board members, do you have any announcements or anything you'd like to say this morning? I have one referral I'd like to make, and I'd like someone to please make a motion to do so. The chair can make it, but I think it's nice to have somebody else do it, and that is, I'm interested in exploring ways for us to reduce the cost of overtime in the county, and in some conversations I've had with some of our employees, there is, believe me, they're tired of overtime. We don't have enough people to cover all the slots. They're stretched way too thin. So the issue of the drop program, a program that is used in some other parts of California where we hire back retired employees to cover shifts and cover responsibilities for our current employed members of public safety, this drop program, I think, is worth exploring. It has saved significant dollars in other communities, and I'm interested in it being applied to the sheriff's office, to the detention deputies, and to the fire department. So I recognize in the sheriff's department that the sheriff would, you know, he would certainly have a role in that, but if you don't mind, I'd like to just refer to Mr. Alsop an analysis of that and to give us some feedback on the feasibility of it, if it's workable here or not. Would anybody be willing to make that referral?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to that? All in favor, please indicate your vote.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. You guys helped me with that referral. Okay, are there any other board member comments or reports? Okay, let's go down then to item number 10 on this morning's agenda. It is a hearing regarding a proposed resolution of necessity to acquire 24.07 acres adjacent to the China Grade sanitary landfill. Mr. Nations, are you going to begin this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Deputy Jerry Bradley from my office will be handling this matter.
Good morning, Ms. Bradley.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here today to ask your board to authorize county council to initiate an action in imminent domain to acquire property near the China Grade landfill. Ms. Nancy Ewart and Mr. Pope are here today to talk to you about the project itself. During the hearing, we will be giving you evidence on several items, and it will be necessary for your board to make findings as outlined in the board letter, basically that the public interest and necessity require the proposed project. The proposed project has been planned and located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury, that the property is necessary for the proposed project, and that the offer to purchase, as required by government code 7267.2, has been made to the owners of the property. Two of the owners have made a request. There is some confusion as to exactly who has been represented. There are approximately eight owners. We have two requests to speak. It's my understanding that Kathleen Pierce is represented separately, and that Mr. Louis Glupo represents the Noriega family in this negotiation. There is also the Bernal family, which has a part ownership in this property, and to the best of my knowledge, they are not represented at this time. This property has a long history. The county, in one way or another, has been trying to acquire it since 1999. We have been going back and forth. There have been due to deaths, changes in the ownership, so it has been a long process. But we are now at the point where we have absolutely no choice but to go forward and acquire the property by eminent domain, and Ms. Ewart will explain that further. Thank you.
Mr. Pope or Ms. Ewart, which of you goes first?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. This item has been around for many, many years, and I'd like to turn this over to Nancy Ewart, Assistant Director of Public Works, with your permission.
Good morning, Ms. Ewart.
Good morning, Chairman Maggert, members of the board. I'd just like to start with a brief background of this facility and outline the issues that we've been dealing with. So the China Grade facility began operation as a burn dump in 1941. Due to the Clean Air Act, in 1970, the burn dump was converted to an unlined landfill, and the landfill reached capacity and went inactive in 1992. In 2002, the department installed a landfill gas and collection system. However, in 2008, with new regulations, we installed perimeter monitoring wells around the landfill, and we found that we had migration of landfill gas past a perimeter boundary, which is a violation of Title 27. In 2009, final closure was constructed. However, in 2015, after a number of years, the LEA at the behest of Cow Recycle basically had to issue a notice and order for the county to abate the violation. The LEA had been aware, environmental health had been aware of the violation since 2008, but as the department had been working with the family and the property owners, they were giving us grace until 2015. Basically, the state required a issuance of a notice and order. So a little bit about the background of the acquisition itself. It used to be within state law that we had local planning control and that we could establish planning buffers around our solid waste facilities as necessary public facilities. So just to remind your board, this facility is actually within the city of Bakersfield. So in 1986, the city established planning buffers around the China Grade landfill. However, in 1989, state law removed that local planning authority could restrict the land use surrounding the landfill, and so in 1993, county council advised the department to purchase the property to protect the landfill, because otherwise that would result in inverse condemnation by the county. So we began purchasing property around all of our landfills, and at that time, we had 15 landfills. In 2002, sorry, it's 2000, the city actually made a general plan consistency finding for the buffer purchases, because at that time, we were purchasing buffer on the east, on the west, and on the north of the China Grade landfill. So in 2018 now, the county has purchased all buffers in all of our 15 landfills. We've purchased over 2,900 acres of property, with the exception of the Noriega property. So this is basically a map of the landfill itself, and as you can see, we purchased the west buffer in 2001 from the Palmerance family. General Holdings was developing the area around... around the bluffs, and so for that project, we actually purchased over 50 acres in 2000 from General Holdings, and since 1999, we've been working with the Noriega family to purchase the eastern buffer, and on this map, it is shown as parcel one. So this is the landfill itself, and one of the issues around the China Grade landfill, and this was basically old operational practice, was that you built the landfill almost immediately up to your property boundary, and so in the northeast corner of our landfill, the landfill is within 18 feet of the property line, and we simply cannot control the landfill gas at that location. We installed the landfill gas system early on, we've been operating it for well over 10 years, and while we have seen an improvement, we cannot bring it below the regulatory limit. The China Grade landfill itself poses some very unique challenges for landfill gas control. It is an unlined landfill, it has 120 feet of depth that's in place, it's built into the Kern River Bluff, which is very steep terrain and has fractured bedrock, so even though we have a landfill gas system in, we simply cannot control the landfill gas in these locations. This actually shows the landfill gas, we've, just since 2010, the system was in much earlier and was higher at the time that we first installed it, you can see that it has greatly improved, but since 2014, we hover at that line, but we're more times over the regulatory limit than under, and therefore we stay within violation. So again, we had our first violation, and the violation is 5% by volume of methane at the property line, we exceeded that in 2018, the notice and order was issued in 2015, we received our first extension in 2016, our second extension in 2018, and we are about to ask for a third extension and the grace of Environmental Health. The potential penalties for not complying with this notice and order is $10,000 a day for each day the violation occurred, and additionally, there are several penalties that could be imposed upon the county as $5,000 per day dating back to the first day of violation, which is 2008. The county over the years has looked at a whole number of options, we categorize these as feasible and infeasible. So one option is, and we've done this at our other sites, to buy the additional property, that's our proposed action, to buy a buffer around our landfill such that we can control the landfill gas. We've also looked at installing landfill gas extraction wells, not just in the waste, but in the, we call it the Vados Zone, outside the landfill itself, we've looked at that, however, that would still require purchasing the property. Infeasible options that we've looked at is installing a slurry cutoff wall, the engineering estimate of that was over $10 million. We looked at relocating the waste away from the property boundary, the engineering estimate was over $9 million. And the third option was to increase the vacuum on the current landfill gas collection system, but with the fractured bedrock and the geologic formation, this hugely increases the significant risk of landfill fire by bringing oxygen into the landfill. So this chart basically describes to you the history of the appraisals provided by the county, by the owner, and the offers made, and dating back to November of 1999. The county has appraised the property over 10 times, and we've made offers, I think there's nine offers, no, actually, there's more than 10 offers that have been made. You will see, the offers vary. At one time, we were looking, we had two parcels that actually are in contention, one was both parcel one and parcel two on that earlier map, that is the 38 acres, and parcel one is the 24 acres. It has always been the department's desire to purchase all the way out to the property line, and that would be the 38 acres. However, given that this has come down to an eminent domain action, we may only ask for the minimum property that is allowed to safely bring the property into compliance, and so that is the 24.07 acres. You will also notice that there's some gaps as we've appraised the property, and as Jerry Bradley noted, this property is held at an estate, and sadly, senior members of the family would pass, and the department would be asked by the property owners to provide time so that the newest estate could be settled, and at that time, sometimes, there was new heirs that came into the question a number of times, the control of the property passed back and forth between the Noriega family and the Bernal family, and so that has changed hands a number of times also. But you can see that over the years, while there have been slight, you know, voids in time, basically, it's been a consistent march of really trying to get this property. This is particularly important of all of our buffer properties, because we are in violation right on our property line. Most recent activity, we made a final offer in May of 2017, in June, the owners requested a second separate appraisal, in November of 2017, property management reached out and asked for a status update for the second appraisal and did not receive a response. At that time, working with County Council, we acted to bring this hearing before you, and at that time, we received two letters from the family that Ms. Bradley referenced. So that is the end of staff's presentation, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ewart. Ms. Bradley, do you have anything else to add? So I know that we're going to hear from the public, we have a public hearing to open, and here with regard to their concerns, is there anything else that we need to know before we open that public hearing? Okay, so the recommended action is to, we're discussing whether or not we will proceed with an attempt to purchase the 24 acres, only parcel, was that one?
That's correct.
Okay, not parcels two or three?
No.
Okay, very good. Any members of the board have a question before we go to the public? We clearly and certainly want to hear from the public about this and those people who are affected by it, so we'll open a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the board this morning with regard to your concerns about the recommended action on item number 10? Good morning, sir.
My name is Peter Beckman, I'm a local attorney, I'm here on behalf of the Noriega family interests with respect to this matter. Basically, the Noriega family is opposed to this, they believe that the county is going to take, or is proposing to take, their property forever for a problem that is solely solving itself. I took a look at the quarterly reports, I should add that although I'm an attorney, I do have a scientific background, my undergraduate degree is from Caltech, where they make you take a year of chemistry whether you want to or not. Basically, I've been looking at the closed site inspection reports on the China Grade landfill, there are public records that's available from the state government website, and when we look at the early reports, the county is out of compliance with every monitoring well with extreme readings, you see 13.5%, 14.7%, 15.7%, okay? And then you take a look at the reports down through the years, and it's slowly lower and lower, one well comes into compliance, another monitoring well comes into compliance, until we have the current situation where there is occasional noncompliance with one well out of all of the monitoring wells, and it's floating up and down at around the cutoff point, which is 5%. Now, the reason for this is very simple, okay? The methane is created by anaerobic decomposition of organic matter, or to everybody who is not a chemist or biologist, it's caused by rotting garbage. The landfill has been closed, it has been capped, there's no more garbage that's going to go in there, the methane is being created by the garbage that's already there, and as the garbage decomposes, it stops creating new methane. Eventually, there will be no methane created at all, and it will be inert unless there's methane coming up through the cracked bedrock, and so you've got a situation that is correcting itself naturally. Now, with respect to the idea of the buffer zone, you already have a buffer zone, okay? The land is vacant, there's nothing on the land except for ground squirrels and gophers and the occasional kit fox. It's undeveloped, and it's not going to be developed as long as there's a problem, a potential problem with methane. In fact, the department, the current County Waste Management Department noted itself in a letter that was sent in 2015, it says, "The exceedances are currently not a threat to human health, there are no structures adjacent to the site which could be affected. Furthermore, the elevated methane concentrations are more than 100 feet below grade at the property boundary." In other words, they're saying, "We've got a technical violation, but it's not a real problem." Now, if the problem is simply the location of the monitoring well, okay, then it can be taken care of without a condemnation, we could have an easement for the monitoring well, we can have an agreement for non-development as long as there's a potential problem, there's many, many ways to take care of this without taking my client's property. And I think the board should seriously consider the adverse effects on my clients, that this is property that's been in the family for hundreds of years, or not hundreds, but over 100 years as I understand it. It has development potential when the land site becomes completely inactive, and to say, "Well, we get to get this property at a rock bottom price based on the fact that it's currently unoccupied grazing land," I think is very, very unfair to my clients, and they strongly oppose this condemnation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckman. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make comment this morning? Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Donald Oldacre, I am also an attorney, and I represent Kathleen Pierce and the Bernal family, I guess my letter was not clear that it was the Bernal half of the property, and I'm just going to-
So you're here for Pierce and Bernal?
Yes.
Okay.
I am just going to echo Mr. Beckman's comments that my clients also oppose the action, and that there are alternatives to provide the county with a way of coming into compliance short of acquiring the property and taking ownership of the property forever in terms of either an easement or something that would be less onerous and would allow the natural process that Mr. Beckman described to take place, and in the fullness of time, still allow my clients and his clients the benefits of property that their family has held for a considerable period of time. Secondly, there have been a number of different appraisals, as we alluded to earlier, there was an appraisal done by my clients back in 2009, that was more than three times the amount of the county appraisals, and my clients have asked for, in the event that there is a decision to go forward with this, for the opportunity to get a different appraisal. That hasn't taken place yet, but before a decision is made, they would like additional time to do that, and in the interim, the measures that Mr. Beckman described could go into effect that would be less devastating to both sides of the ownership and wouldn't take the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oldacre. Are there any other members of the public that would like to say something to us this morning? Very good, Mr. Beckman. I don't see anyone else, so it's only the two attorneys who have, we may have some questions for you in a minute, gentlemen, so can you just stay near? If there are no other members of the public, then we'll close the public hearing and return to the board for a comment and potential action. Are there members of the board, Supervisor Scrivner?
Thank you, Chairman Maggard. I heard County Council say that we, at this point, we have no choice in moving forward with staff's recommendation to acquire the property through eminent domain, however, Mr. Beckman and Mr. Oldacre, they have suggested that there are alternatives to moving forward with staff's recommendation of acquiring the property with the current appraised value that the county did, some suggestions of an easement that could be put in place, perhaps leasing the property, an agreement for non-development over a long period of time until the readings of the methane come down and we no longer are in violation. Is that a, is that a potential solution for us, or is the state going to require that we own the property in perpetuity for the landfill? Ms. Ewart, if she could answer that, thank you, Chairman.
Supervisor Scrivner through the chair. Unfortunately, the state requires the county to own the property to bring it within the permitted boundary and to bring it into compliance. Very, very early on, we looked if we could lease the property or place monitoring wells outside the property, but state law is very, very clear that we have to amend our property boundary and that we have to own the full permitted amount for the facility, and so unfortunately, leasing is not an option. The attorneys also brought up the issue of that this will resolve itself over time, and one of the things that we see with landfills is that we do have a high generation of landfill gas at the very beginning, but then it tails off, but it stays at a certain level for a very, very long and prolonged time.
How long?
I would expect the next 20 years, and so at this point, we have no ability to reconcile our notice and order from the state in a timely fashion to bring the facility into compliance, and that is what we are required to do.
And lastly, Mr. Oldacre suggested that they would like additional time to do an appraisal of their own, that they did an appraisal back in 2009 that was, I think, more than three times, is what he said, more than three times, as much as the county proposal. However, in your slides, I noticed that there was a request from the property owners in June of 2017 to do a second appraisal, up till November of 2017, that had not been done, is that correct?
Supervisor Scrivner through the chair, yes, that is correct, and so when the owners request a separate appraisal, they hired their own appraiser, and then the county actually compensates for, compensates them for the cost of that appraisal, however, they have not acted on that second appraisal. On the first appraisal, I would just like to note, and I have this in a report, so I'll just be very, very close, the property owner had one appraisal prepared in 2009, which valued the property at $15,000 per acre. Property management staff reviewed the appraisal prepared by the property owner and concluded that the properties selected as compatible sales were not compatible, and included parcels adjacent to existing subdivisions, and/or parcels with paved road access, adjacent utilities to the parcel, or were active farm production, and they were without the oil-related contamination which is also on this property. And one of the things your board should realize is that when we first brought this to the attention of the family and were first in negotiations in 1999, in 2002, the property owners actually submitted a zone change from agricultural and agricultural 20-foot minimum, 20-acre minimum, to residential R1, seven units per acre. At that point, the city of Bakersfield denied that request. And the reason the city of Bakersfield denied that request, as several of your board members recall, the city had a very similar experience with the homes on Panorama Bluffs that were built right next to the Bakersfield City Sanitary Landfill, some of the old burn dump from that facility were in backyards, but more importantly, the landfill gas was migrating into the basements and the cellars of the houses on Panorama Bluffs. The city basically had to buy every single one of those homes.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Ewart. Also, this, the department says that the potential penalties of $10,000 per day, plus a potential of another $5,000 per day, and that would go back to, retroactive back to And so if those fines, if the state started to assess those fines, where would that money come from? This is our enterprise zone, could you explain? This would go back to basically all the rate payers in the county that pay for waste disposal service?
Supervisor Scrivner through the chair, yes, that's exactly correct. Whenever there's penalties to be paid that are related to solid waste operations, those funds come from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, and that directly impacts the land use fee and the gate fee that is charged to the residents and businesses of Kern County.
And we- And we, we looked at some other options. You had on your, looks like your third to the last slide, options that were evaluated. You have one that, one column that says the feasible options, and then the infeasible. Install a slurry cutoff wall, that would be a $10 million minimum, minimum cost, and relocating the waste, a $9 million minimum cost. And so that as well would then be assessed to the enterprise fund. And so how, so if we did move forward with, with those expensive options, what effect does that have on the ratepayers?
Supervisor Scrivener through the chair, similarly, that full brunt is paid by the ratepayers from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. And although we, we looked at the slurry wall, that slurry wall would have to be 120 feet deep to basically cut off the landfill gas, the whole depth of the landfill from migration. The county did look at one other option at the behest of the property owners. They have a, an area that is at the south side of their property that has oil field contamination. Basically, it was under production for a number of years. And at one point, the property owners asked us, if we traded the property, would the county remediate the contamination on the south side of their own property? Because this, this is about an 80-acre piece of property total. And the county did a full analysis of what it would take to remediate that oil field contamination, and it was at about $700,000, and that was over 10 years ago.
And finally, is the state aware that we're having this hearing today? They, they have not begun assessing these, these charges, $10,000 a day with an additional, potential $5,000 a day dating back to 2008. They're asking for more time to do another appraisal. Can you, can you let us know, do we, do we bear additional risk if we don't move forward today? If we give, gave them another six months?
Supervisor Scrivener through the chair, I can only speak that we are giving constant reports to the Environmental Health Department, and they are passing that on to Cal Recycle, but Cal Recycle is losing their patients. It took, the, the Environmental Health Department really waited to have to issue that notice and order, and now we've asked, we're about to ask for a third extension of that notice and order. And I cannot tell you what Cal Recycle will force environmental health to do, but it clearly is within their powers to say, "Stop. You have to resolve this."
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Scrivener. Supervisor Gleason?
Thanks, Chairman. I got a couple of questions. Some of them are already covered, but I want to go a little more deeply in it. Could you talk a little bit about, Mr. Beckman brought up some points about the slope is naturally resolving itself and achieving some type of, getting more and more compliant with the requirements of state law? Could you talk about that? And then you mentioned, counted that with a 20-year timeframe, your experience. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Correct. So what Mr. Beckman referred to was basically, this is the landfill gas readings at that probe. And so as you can see, in 2010, it was up at about 13%. It was actually quite higher when we first installed the probe. Over time, it has come down, and it, and it came down until about 2013, 14. But now what we see is that it continues to bounce right at that compliance line. And, and remember, the, let me give you a little bit of background on why 5% is the compliance line. So for methane, and the volume of methane, when it hits 5%, it goes into what is called the explosive limit. Once it goes over about 10%, so, so one, the gas, it's just not quite, right now, it's still in the explosive limit. When it drops below that red line, the gas is a little lean and, and the methane would not explode. When it moves up about above 10%, it becomes too rich. So there's this, this reason that that is established at 5%. We have, at that depth, explosive gas at our property boundary. So that is why that standard is set there.
And how long do you propose, do you, do you project, in your experience, that that, what I see in this graph is from 2010 to about December 2015 to be a decrease in the general slope of that line.
Exactly.
And then from December 2015 to today, I see an increase. So that's the way I look at this graph. Now, could you talk to me about what you look, if you were to project in the future, another five years, what are you thinking?
There's a whole variety of factors that play into this. So part of the reason it came down during that time was, we looked back and said, "Can we put exist, more existing wells into the landfill itself?" And we did that. And we have maximized the amount of landfill gas extraction we can do within the existing landfill. Part of the reason that it moves around, it has to do with how much rain we've had, if there's moisture in the landfill, if, basically, most of that waste is sitting there and it's not really decomposing. But if it gets moisture in it, it does decompose. As things change, landfills are a very amorphous organ, you could might say, and, and you just never know exactly what will happen. This is a very typical graph, but what we will look at is, it will stay at this level, it could well stay at this level for 20 years, and we can't affect it.
Thanks. A couple of other questions, moving on. Mr. Alveker talked about alternatives. You brought up some unfeasible alternatives. Are you satisfied, or could you talk to me about alternatives and what we've looked at and what we haven't looked at?
We've worked with the family. So first, we have done with consulting engineers, and we looked at a slurry cutoff wall, trying to cut the, the landfill gas off from being able to migrate. That was a $10 million estimate. We looked at removing the waste and, and actually having to relocate it. That was an over $9 million estimate, and those estimates were many years ago. So I can only tell you that things have not gotten cheaper in the meantime. Those were the main considerations. And then the other issue is to pull harder on the landfill gas system itself, and that would bring oxygen into the landfill and would promote landfill fires. And we've actually had a couple that we've had to be very careful. We monitor this, we have this all done through SCADA systems, and we monitor the landfill gas and what our system is doing on a daily basis.
He also talked about appraisal difference and I, of significant proportion that you put on your graph. And I think you described it as saying, one appraisal was about apples, the other was, the other ones were oranges. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Exactly. So when we looked at this, we looked at the property in the vicinity.
Could you put it up on the, on the overhead, too, what you're looking at, that graph?
Sure. Okay, so this is the track record of the appraisals done by the county, and we've had them updated on a regular basis. You can see that in January of 20, of 2005, we had the highest appraisal, and that was about $7,000. And that was, that was right at the time the General Holdings was getting ready to develop a portion of the bluffs. So there was a lot of interest in this area, thinking that it was going to be a master plan community and all of that. Since that time, it's come down, it's, it stays right at about $5,500 or $4,500. And we have a, an appraiser that has looked at this over and over and continues to bring in any new properties that have sold in the area to look to see, has something changed? The owners did provide an appraisal in April of 2009 that came in at $15,000. And the primary difference was, they were considered that those were not compatible or not comparable properties. These properties that they looked at were next to existing subdivisions, which indicated there was no issues such as landfills. There was no oil field contamination, as there is on this property. You may not also realize that this property is, is immediately north of Bear Mountain Co-Generation. So you've got a co-generation, a heavy industrial use right there, and they bring their, their hazardous materials in right to that location. They also looked at parcels that had paved road access, that had utilities in place, or that were in active farm production. This has been basically vacant open space with the exception of the oil field production for the last 40 years. And, and the contamination on the south side of the property is fairly significant.
Thank you. Two more questions. Talk to me about the state law. What are we mandated to do, and what is the state directing us to do, and what are the limits that the states are giving us to operate within?
So the state of California requires that we control our landfill gas below 5% of methane by volume at our property line. That's the state law. And that is why, and the Board of Supervisors has, has adopted this in the general plan, the city council has adopted this in the general plan, that we should have buffers around our solid waste facilities. In the Kern County general plan, we require 620 feet around current facilities. These are facilities that have been in operation for a long time, but any new facility has to have at least a 1,320-foot buffer around it. So for instance, when the Bena landfill was cited, it was cited, and we purchased 1,200 feet around the entire Bena landfill. That is the prudent practice of the day because you have not just landfill gas, you have groundwater issues, you have all sorts of unintended consequences from, from solid waste operations. So we feel that we can control this landfill gas within 600 feet of the property boundary. The city of Bakersfield still has its zoning restrictions that are in place, that remain in place on this site. And they basically restrict it to, you could use industrial development outside this area. The oil field use is compatible with the landfill. The co-generation plant is compatible with the landfill. But as the property owner proposed in 2002, residential development right up against the landfill is just simply not compatible use.
And what are the liabilities or the risks the county is taking? You talked to Supervisor Scrivener about $10,000 a day and $5,000 a day, and it was in your brief. Could you talk about that?
Those are, those are the administrative penalties that can be levied by Cal Recycle. And that does not include the risks. When the city of Bakersfield had to buy those properties, they were in lawsuits for every single one of those homes. So it costs them millions of dollars in purchasing the properties and remediating the situation at the Bakersfield City Sanitary Landfill.
So in your opinion, Cal Recycle is losing their patience. They're telling us that we need to gain control of this limitation, this gas limitation, or they are going to take action. And if that is true, the, that cost, you know, we'd have to do a lot of math, and that cost would be, if that happened, would pass on to the ratepayers of Kern County.
Supervisor Gleason through the chair, that's absolutely correct. And, and I know Matt Constantine was here a little bit earlier, but every single time the, the environmental health goes through their authorization to be the local enforcement agency by Cal Recycle, they go through a whole litany of, are they holding their facilities in compliance in this? This one issue has been on their findings as the LEA for over 10 years.
Okay, so I think in a letter from Mr. Galupo, from Galupo and Blake, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, he says he wants to, that Mr. Beckman was going to address four factors, and I want to address them for him, to make sure that we've addressed them. The first one is whether the public interest and necessity require the acquisition of the property for sanitary landfill buffer zone. Have we answered that question?
I believe we have answered the question that this is the only action that responsibly deals, but I think county council would be the best one to-
Do you agree with that?
I do, sir.
Two, whether the planning and location of the project is most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private industry. Your opinion?
It is the only location because it is immediately adjacent to the landfill, and it's the minimum amount of property needed.
And your opinion?
That's absolutely correct. It is a compromise because we took the small, we're looking at the smaller acreage. It is a compromise between the cost of the taxpayer and our ability to enforce the health requirements set down by the state.
Three, whether the property is necessary for the project. I guess the 24 acres answers that question.
And there's no other property that will suffice.
That is correct. That's why we are only seeking eminent domain on the 24 acres rather than the entire parcel.
Whether there are offers required by Government Code, Section 7267.2, has been made to the owners of the property.
I can answer that yes, but that is what county council and property management actually did when they sent all of the legal information to the property owners and posted the, the hearings.
Yes, the notice was given, and copies of the notices are in your packet.
Thank you very much. What's the recommendation of staff?
The recommendation of staff, consistent with county council and property management, is that the county move forward with eminent domain to acquire the 24 acres of the Noriega property adjacent to the China Grade landfill.
Unfortunately, I support that recommendation. And make a motion to do so.
Okay, we have a motion to proceed with the recommended action, which is to acquire by eminent domain the 24 acres. I have a few questions I'd like to ask. Thank you for your, the questions you guys have already answered. But before I ask my questions, I believe that county council has asked to make other comments. Is that the case?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to make an observation. There was some discussion earlier on about a second appraisal. And I would just like to point out that if you adopt the resolution today, all that is, is an authorization to begin the process of eminent domain. There's plenty of time for people to get another appraisal, to negotiate a price. The value of the property is not an issue before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nations. That's actually one of the specific questions I have, is regarding the value of the property. So some of the alternatives to mitigate this are extraordinarily expensive, and many, many millions of dollars. Another alternative you mentioned was this wall, 120 feet deep, to separate the landfill from this property. I think you said the cost of that wall nine years ago was $750,000. Is that, is that what you said, Mrs. Ziewert?
The cost of that wall over 10 years ago was $10 million.
Oh, $10 million, sorry. A far cry from $750,000. So all of the alternative methods are extraordinarily expensive.
That is correct.
Yeah. So what is the range within which we may come to an agreement? If the, I, I don't want to negotiate here in public, and it, my instincts just tell me that would be very messy for us to do. So what are the, what is the range that we might be able to come to if, if there is a price at which the owners feel that it's reasonable for them to sell the property? What is our ability to be flexible as to that value?
Well, what the, what the, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What the Constitution requires is the payment of just compensation. That's usually reflected in an appraisal that reflects fair market value. Where there's a dispute about the fair market value, and there usually is, the owner will get an appraisal, and then usually the parties agree somewhere in the middle of that. It's a very common practice. I've handled probably, for the county, over the years, about two dozen eminent domain matters, and only two of those 24 actually went to trial. We were able to resolve all of them.
So is there a range, a top range at which we can, we, the Board of Supervisors, can determine in our judgment that it is just compensation? If, is there, are we capped as far as what our appraisal was, and we can only go so far above that? Or if they came up with an appraisal, could we go as far as meeting whatever their appraisal was if we deemed that that was just compensation?
Yes.
We can?
Yes.
Okay. The, and I'm going to just clarify for the record, because the public doesn't have copies of all of the correspondence that we have here. Mr. Beckman, you, are you representing the Noriegas as Mr. Galupo wrote a letter on their behalf? Is it the case that you, there's no other third-party counsel that isn't here today?
Mr. Galupo hired-
I'm sorry, sir. Could you come to the microphone?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Beckman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Galupo hired me to represent the family, and it's my understanding that I'll be continuing to represent them after this hearing.
Very good. And, and Mr. Beckman and Mr. Oldacre, do you, do your clients represent 100% of the ownership of this? Because it, it isn't like this is split into three or four pieces. Don't these people, these, these different families have undivided interests in a whole piece of property?
Yes, Your Honor. The, the assessor's parcel was inherited by the descendants of Frank Noriega, and they all, they all hold undivided interests.
Okay. Mr. Oldacre, you agree with that?
Yes, Your Honor. Yes, I, I agree. My client, between the two of us, we hold 100%.
Thank you very much. Okay, I am, I'm always hesitant to take property by eminent domain. I would much rather reach an agreement with the, the owners that is agreeable to both sides. sides. There are some advantages to eminent domain as far as the replacement period for property, and there's some tax advantages to, to going through an eminent domain process. So it could be that at the end of the day, that the owners might think that there is an advantage to having us formally go through eminent domain. But my, where I come to rest on this is if it is necessary for us to do this, I want to pay just compensation to them. So Mr. Beckman and Mr. Oldacre, if we can reach an agreement on just compensation, do you think your clients may be interested in selling this property?
I believe that if an agreement could be reached on just compensation, then, then a sale could occur. They, they would prefer to keep the property, but if they can, you know, there's other property around. And as you said, with a condemnation, or even a regular sale, you can always, you know, do an exchange for property. For tax reasons.
Even the new tax act allows the continuation of real estate exchanges. Mr. Oldacre?
And my clients would concur with that, that if, if an agreement could be reached on just compensation, a sale could be agreed to.
Okay. So my bias would be that we allow a discussion to occur before we formalize the process of condemnation. If that is not possible, then proceeding so that we have the conversation immediately after, I think, is, is a second alternative. But I, I prefer giving them, I think we have everybody's attention. It is exceedingly obvious that we must do something. We cannot run the risk of incurring $10,000 a day in penalties and, and put at risk the taxpayers' treasure. So that, that is, that is clear. Is, one more question from Mr. Oldacre and Mr. Beckman. Have you, have you gentlemen secured that alternate appraisal? Is that available now?
Okay, it's in the process. Rich Crezo, who's a well-qualified appraiser, has been hired by my clients to do an appraisal.
Mine are in the process of engaging a separate appraiser to get their own. So there will be, there will be two alternatives available. Okay, thank you. Thank you. When do you think that those appraisals will be available to us?
I, I would estimate probably 60 days, Your Honor. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you don't need to call me, Your Honor.
Yeah, I'm too used to appearing in court. I, I would think 60 days. Mr. Crezo has his office across from mine, and I can sort of nudge him every morning when I see him in the courtyard.
And I'd go along with the 60 to 90-day timeframe.
I'm, I'm not texting my wife here, I'm doing math on my phone, okay? 60 days is 600,000, 90 days is $900,000 in penalties if we were to be hit with that. So if, if, if the state makes that apparent to us that the, they will begin assessing the penalty, how long would it take us to get back in here and start this process so we could put off those, the assessment of those penalties? Is that possible?
Chairman Maggard, I'd have to refer to Jerry Bradley.
Ms. Bradley?
Mr. Chairman, it takes approximately two to three weeks to get a matter at hearing in front of your board. If I may make a suggestion, it would probably be prudent to authorize the initiation of the eminent domain, which gives a public assertion to the state that we are taking this matter seriously and attempting to move forward and with an authorization to county council to delay the actual filing of the complaint for 60 days.
I'm sorry, say that part again. To delay what?
To delay the filing of the actual complaint in Superior Court for 60 days.
So we could take the action but not file the complaint, which means we are giving them time to come up with the appraisal?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Oldacre, do you think you can motivate your appraiser to do it in 60 instead of 90?
I would do my best.
Okay. Are you gentlemen open to the suggestion that was just made? Do you think that's reasonable?
I would think it's reasonable that you give, you've given the county council's office authorization, but before we go through the expensive process of litigation, we try to see if we can work it out.
Yeah.
It's similar to, say, say, in a rental situation, that you always, you have to send a three-day notice, and then you have to wait to see if they catch up before you can begin litigation.
Okay. So do you agree that if we don't file this, whatever, that legal process, what she just indicated, that that stops you from having to incur those significant fees?
Well, yes, it becomes a negotiating situation.
Okay. Mr. Oldacre, do you?
It also stops the county from, the county has costs to, when it files.
Yes, we save, we save our money as well.
Yeah.
I'm always interested in that. Mr. Oldacre, do you agree?
Generally, I would agree with that. I think that in order to do what is being proposed, it would require some fairly, I don't know what the word is, responsive interaction between both our side and county council in terms of if we ask a question or they have a question, we need to be getting back to each other fairly quickly in order to make this all take place within a 60-day timeframe.
Ms. Bradley, Mr. Nations, can we assure them and us that we will actively communicate, I think was the word he said?
Certainly.
You comfortable with that, Mr. Oldacre?
I, I think so. Can I?
It was certainly. I'm teasing, sir. Go ahead.
If I can take a moment to just check with my clients, who have representatives here...
Please do. Please do. We'll pause for a moment.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pope, yes.
I've been through this process a number of times. This motion that we brought before you is just the start of the process. It gives us the direction to move forward and begin in earnest negotiating the property value. It's just a starting point. This is where we have been a number of times, and it's been two years after this before we finally hammer it out. It's not like you're saying, go condemn them at this value. The value has not even begun to be set. We have an appraisal, they are beginning to go get their appraisals. It is what we need to get this moving. So our recommendation is to move on this and then tell us, go find an answer that works.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Mr. Oldacre, do you have an answer for us?
Yes, the proposal is acceptable, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. With that premise, I am inclined to be in favor of it. This, this motion requires a four-fifths vote of the Board of Supervisors, so all four of us would need to agree today to proceed. So I just want to make sure my colleagues understand that. Supervisor Gleason, I think you punched in.
Yeah, I, I thank you very much. I, I'm not inclined to change my motion. I'm very much interested in having a vote on my motion.
Very good. So I'm, I'm now comfortable with the motion in light of the fact that, for all the reasons stated, and look forward to trying to find what is just compensation here so that we can mitigate our issues, protect the taxpayers, and fairly treat the, the property owners. So any other discussion before we vote? Please indicate your vote. Oh, we need a second to the motion, we do not yet have a second.
I need some extra money in the fourth district, since we need four.
You're not going to get it today.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Couch. We have a motion and a second, please indicate your votes.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Perez.
Okay, thank you very much. Gentlemen, thank you for your cooperation on behalf of your clients, county council and Public Works, thank you for your help as well. Moving on now to item number 19 on page four of our agenda. This is a, from the library department, this is a retroactive request for authorization to apply for and accept a Wonderful Community, Wonderful Community grant. And Andy Sullivan, it's my pleasure to introduce to the world Andy Sullivan, who we formerly called Andy Apple. But happy to have you with us this morning.
Good morning. That was the first time this has been said in public, so thank you, Chairman.
My pleasure. Congratulations.
I am Andy Sullivan, your director of Kern County Libraries, and I just wanted to highlight a partnership that has been successful with the Wonderful Company for our Wasco Branch Library. So I will introduce Sheri Wade, who's really been nurturing that relationship with the Wonderful Company, and Caitlin Yates from the Wonderful Company. So here's Sheri.
Good morning, Ms. Wade.
Good morning. Chairman Maggard and members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Sheri Wade. I'm the head librarian and the supervisor of our 23 branches on our two bookmobiles, and I come with wonderful news regarding a generous grant from the Wonderful Company. This $18,100 grant benefits the Wasco Branch Library and therefore all the inhabitants of Wasco. The color of the Wonderful Company logo is green. And with their help, we have been growing the library and its reach to the people of Wasco. There's more programs for teens, more STEM programs, more outreach, more books, and more family activities, just like the residents of Wasco have requested when they were surveyed. The Wonderful Company informed me of a grant that they had previously provided to Bike Bakersfield and that a partner was needed. Over 40 bright green bikes were purchased, and the Wasco Branch was delighted to partner with Bike Bakersfield and plan and host a wonderful bike event. The highlight was giving the bicycles and the helmets to over 40 excited and grateful youth. Wasco Councilman Alex Garcia was also on hand to assist with the distribution and the seat adjustments of the bicycles. Because of this grant, we're also partnering with the Bakersfield Museum of Art for hands-on enriching art programs, museum on the move, and that's to be presented at the Wasco Branch Library, several programs. The current grant provides for the Wasco Library to be opened the first Saturday of every month and pays for all of the staffing on that day. The response from the public has been overwhelmingly positive. Foot traffic at the library continues to build, with the previous first Saturday attracting 149 people with 3,000 to 4,000 people, visitors every month. This grant was established by building partnerships, networking, and establishing relationships. It consists of attending monthly community breakfast meetings with the city of Wasco, attending events in the community, and like volunteering to be a judge for the Rose Festival Parade on your day off. And also to inspire the staff there at Wasco to catch the vision of how the library can be the heartbeat and a gathering place for the community. With the partnerships which have been forged with the Wasco Union School District and the Wonderful Company, here's some of the results. The Wasco Branch is open an average of 34 additional hours per month during the school year. $1,500 will be spent for new books. $1,200 will be spent on the teen advisory board meetings and activity. There'll be a monthly STEM program for youth. A movie license has been purchased, that's very popular up there, as there's no movie theater. There will be a place to charge phone and other devices, again, a very popular item. There's increased access to the library for working parents, there's more outreach, which again will turn, will create more foot traffic. There will be four professionally-produced children's programs and a smart board for educational and recreational purposes. The positive results of increased funding for Wasco Branch Library is dramatic in these lean times. Writing, planning, executing, and reporting a grant takes a cooperative team, of which I'm most grateful to be a part of. This is a success to celebrate as this grant continues to allow us to provide educational, cultural, social, and recreational opportunities, and to inspire and empower the residents of Wasco. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Are you Caitlin Yates?
I am Caitlin Yates.
Good morning, Caitlin. Thank you for, Ms. Yates, I'm sorry. Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you for having me.
Please, please give us your perspective.
I think Sheri did an incredible job of outlining the successes of this partnership. This is a partnership we've been able to forge over the last year or so of working with the Wasco Branch Library. And I think she outlined that the opening of the Saturdays and opening every month, it has really increased the usage of the library and actually shown that there is a demand for more usage, bringing in partners such as the schools and such as Bakersfield Museum of Art. Now, one thing about our grants program is it is a year-over-year grants program. It is something they've applied for in the past, they've applied for in this year, but is not guaranteed in perpetuity. And so while we're incredibly excited about the prospects of what will come in 2018, and we hope that we can continue to partner with Kern Library, especially in Wasco, it's just not something that will be guaranteed in the future, but we're, we're lucky to have such incredible partners and, and to be the funders for, for this program in Wasco. Thank you.
Indeed, we are fortunate, and we are very fortunate that the Wonderful Company has, they're just an incredible corporate neighbor and a member of our community. We're grateful for that. Supervisor Couch, I believe, would like to make comment.
I just want to say thank you and ask you to pass along our thanks to everyone at Wonderful, and also thank you to our library staff. I'll make a motion on staff's recommendation, and this is really just kind of another example. I know you do lots of things in the community of Wasco, which is in the fourth district, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, but we have not yet asked the public for any comments they might have. Are there any members of the public here today that would like to make a comment about item number 19? Please cast your votes then.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Perez.
Ladies, thank you very much, and please extend our gratitude to the Wonderful Companies. Next up is item, actually, that's it for this morning. So we have closed session to deal with this morning, colleagues. Without, without any further business to be forced, we have a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Motion.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. Without objection, so ordered.